All right, we're gonna call our meeting to order. If we can all stand for our invi-- oh, I'm sorry, if we can have the roll call by our clerk.
Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandal.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio is absent. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quinterol. Councilmember Soria. Council President Baines.
Here.
Sorry I had you guys stand a little early, but now we will have our invocation by Pastor Anne Schlesinger from St. Paul's Methodist Church. And then remain standing and right after the invocation, we will salute the flag.
Will you pray with me? Gracious God, we are grateful. We are grateful for your abundant blessings and we ask your further blessings on the work that's done here today. We give you thanks for all those who work for this city. We give you thanks for the wonders of this city and we ask that we all open our hearts and our minds to your will, Lord, to make this place even more wonderful. We ask your blessing on each and every person who works for the city, from the mayor, council members, clerks, police officers, firefighters, all those who work here. Lord, open their hearts, give their hands peace. We ask this in your many names. Amen.
Face the flag, ready, salute. All right, good afternoon. We have a few ceremonial presentations this morning. First up, we will have a presentation of certificate of recognition of Sherri Bages by the mayor's office.
Well, we're here to celebrate Sherri Bages-- Borges, Bages? It's Bages. I only know her as Sherri. Sherri's been with our Civil Service Board for 20 years. So to give you-- I was 40-years-old about there.
I remember you as just a young supervisor.
Yes. And yes, there's a very long history and we won't spend a lot of time, but first of all, thank you for 20 years of service. The Civil Service Board is the place where if and when there are employment actions to be considered by an independent third party, the Civil Service Board is that board that commissioned, that third independent party that reviews those. Sherri probably has seen probably a book, lots of books, lots of stories, lots of why and where and therefor's, but she has always been attentive and I have had to testify to that more than once and so help me God and all that good stuff. But she, as well as the other board members who are here today as well, provide us a service because, a very important service and it's all volunteer. And they are dealing with very difficult cases, very difficult situations because there are times in which we're dealing with somebody's employment. And these decisions that the board is responsible for do not come easy. And it's all volunteer. It's all donated time by very diverse and very committed group of individuals. So I want to just thank you personally and on behalf of the mayor and the council. I haven't lost a case in front of Sherri, so that's another good thing. But that wasn't because of anything other than, you know, we try to be prepared. But I also appreciate the due diligence that the commission-- and they always ask, you always gotta be prepared because she, as well as some of the other board members, will ask some very pointed questions of us in order to make sure that they reach the right decision. So again, on behalf of the city of Fresno, thank you very much for your 20 years. So--
Couple of words? Sure. I'm not very good at speaking in front of people, so my apologies first, but I wanted to thank, first of all, the office of the mayor, certainly yourself, Bruce, the city council. I had the pleasure of serving for three mayors, a lot of city managers, and a fair number of council members. But it was without a doubt in my professional career, serving on the Civil Service Board was without a doubt the highlight of my professional career. I absolutely loved it. The board members that I worked with were people that, a couple of whom are here today, that were just full of integrity and good judgment and made fine decisions over the years, of which I was really proud. You know, I can't express how much I respect the office of personnel and the work that was done by the people who are sitting right here in this row and as well as Jeff and Jeff's predecessors to support the board and provide an environment in which we could be successful. In that same voice, I want to say that many of the managers and supervisors, as well as representatives of the various unions, came to those meetings well-prepared, diligent in their work to manage the process itself and were just delightful to work with. So with that, I thank you for some really great years. Thank you.
Let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Next up, we will have a proclamation of AT&amp;T's Digital Life Water Detection Program by Councilmember Brandal.
I wanted to honor some friends today, a group from AT&amp;T, and I'd like for you guys to come on up and join me, if you will. Last year, we got to dedicate a-- or open a grand opening of a new AT&amp;T Store of the Future, a very fantastic store, AT&amp;T shop, in the new El Paso Shopping Center. And it's beautiful. Whether you use AT&amp;T or don't use AT&amp;T, you should go to this store, just check out all the gadgets and goodies and high-tech stuff. It's just fantastic. And so this year, as a matter of fact, last week, AT&amp;T had another event at that store, which was they are-- they have a project underway. They have a new feature that they're offering for sale for their customers and others that monitors your home's water. And I might let you go into a little bit more detail, Julie, but this is Julie and Danny and Jack. Have you guys mixed up? You're Danny, right?
Yes.
And Danny gave a technical review last week of the new product and Jack is the store manager. And we also have Mark Scazari here with AT&amp;T as well. But we appreciate the fact that they-- so they actually have this new product and for every one they sell, they are making a donation, and I believe it's up to $100,000, $50,000? $50,000 for water-related projects here in the valley with the Sierra Nevadas. And I'll let you say a little bit more about that, too. But what was really-- well, for starters, the product itself is very unique. It monitors your household water from your smartphone. And if you have a leak-- and Council President Baines, I told a little story about a water leak that you had at one time, but if you have a leak, it'll detect a water leak and you'll save the city water and you'll save yourself a lot of money. And so a lot of different high-tech things at the Store of the Future. And I'm asking most-- I'm asking you to go visit that store, take a look around. But we're really thanking AT&amp;T, not just for this item, but for your ongoing participation with the city of Fresno, helping us out with things. You've been very mindful that we're in a drought. You're offering this project and you're also giving us a little bit of money towards drought-related problems and solutions for that. So Julie, I appreciate it. I'm gonna read a proclamation and then I'm gonna let you talk a little bit, okay?
Absolutely.
So this is a real simple proclamation, just honoring AT&amp;T's help. Whereas the California drought has been going on for over four years and whereas on April 1st, 2015, Governor Jerry Brown imposed water restrictions for the first time on California residents like us, businesses and farms, ordering cities and towns to reduce water usage by 25%. And whereas, in May 2015, California residential water savings statewide were 28.9% compared to May 2013, just two years earlier, up significantly over 13% water savings. And whereas, AT&amp;T has committed to water conservation by kicking off a special offer designed to help more Californians prevent home water waste and by making a contribution to protect our state's natural water resources. And whereas, AT&amp;T is proud to help more Californians prevent a major source of home water waste leaks with a special offer on the Digital Life Water Detection Solution. From now until September 17th, AT&amp;T will donate $10 for each new purchase of Digital Life to the Nature Conservancy for projects like Save the Sierra Nevada, Save Our Water. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Fresno City Council does hereby honor AT&amp;T's Digital Life Water Detection Program. And thank you very much, Julie. I'm gonna give that to you.
Thank you.
All right. And then we'll take a picture in a minute, but if you could tell us a few things about all that AT&amp;T's doing on this. And this was not just Fresno, it was across the state of California, I believe, right?
Yes, that's correct. And hi, good afternoon. I'm Julie Tone, Director of External Affairs with AT&amp;T California. And so first off, we want to send a special thank you to Councilmember Brandal for joining us and kicking off our Digital Life Water Solution program that we have. And so thank you again for supporting AT&amp;T and for the city council supporting AT&amp;T here in Fresno. And so as you are aware, AT&amp;T is very focused on conserving one of our most precious resources and that is water. And so we do have our Digital Life Solution that you can see and experience and sign up for in our-- one of our newest Stores of the Future, which is one of AT&amp;T's evolution of new retail design located at the El Paso Shopping Center in Herndon and 99 there. And it's a great way for you to be able to prevent home water loss and water waste in your homes by leak detection and utilizing your smart device. And so with that, I'm gonna let Jack talk just real briefly, a little bit more about the application, and we welcome you to come to the store. And again, thank you so much. As many of you may know or may not know, one of AT&amp;T's goals globally is to reduce our water by 150 million gallons annually. And so we're very committed to water conservation and very excited to be here today and thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack. I'm the store manager for the AT&amp;T Store of the Future on Fresno Marketplace, El Paso. So we definitely would, you know, like you to visit our store. We invite you to touch and feel and it's a very interactive design where you can, you know, touch a different solution, specifically the water solution that we have. And our app allows you to conserve water by controlling it from wherever you are. So I'm gonna have Danny, who's one of our friendly expert in the store, give you a brief overview of what that looks like.
Thank you. So with the Digital Life App, it's a pretty simple app, pretty much. You could detect anything in your house, windows, electricity, I mean, the whole nine yards, but more specifically, we have this water solution, which you could actually, if you have a leak in your home, to be able to shut down that leak at the push of a button, not to worry about crawling underneath a faucet or a sink or anything like that, just hitting a button on your phone and turning it off. It's as simple as that.
So thank you again. We look forward to working with all of you and again, thank you again for your support from the city. AT&amp;T is very excited to help our California customers prevent home water waste. So thank you.
Would you join me in giving him a hand for helping us with water?
Next up, we have a very special proclamation of Stephen A. Hogg Day and I will be presenting that along with City Manager Bruce Rudd and Tommy Skater.
So council, everyone, we are acknowledging with 33 years?
Almost 33.
Almost 33 years. Mr. Hogg has been with the city of Fresno in the Public Utilities Department. He's been the Assistant Director for Wastewater Division for what, at least?
About 12.
12 years. I was gonna say 10, 12 years. In a lot of ways, Steve is a visionary in that he was the one who kind of laid the foundation for what we-- our Recycled Water Program, our Purple Pipe Program. And it's very-- there's some irony that now 10 years, 12 years later, we're in the midst of one of the worst droughts and everyone's trying to scramble to figure out a way to fund a project that literally Steve thought of probably eight years ago when we went back with our first-- our last water rate program. So in a lot of ways, when we see that pipeline delivering water to Roding Park, for example, hopefully in the next couple of years, it was the work that Steve did years ago that is the reason why in a few years, that park will be again, green and vibrant. So I want to personally thank Steve for 33 years, probably closer to 34 years. For those of you who don't know, he is-- has taken a job in Monterey and he's also an avid-- he and his wife are avid motorcycle riders. And I joked with him, so you move into Monterey, I sure hope you don't get bored driving up California 1 when it's 78 degrees versus riding around here when it's 105 outside. So because for those of us who have ridden, 105 isn't exactly the best weather to be riding motorcycle. It's probably even worse if you're riding on the back. Nevertheless, thank you, Steve, very much for your years of service. So Tommy?
Yes, thank you, Steve. It's bittersweet today. I've had the chance to work with wastewater utilities, west coast, east coast, and I can tell you that the legacy that Steve is leaving here just rivals anything around the country right now. I mean, this city is really well-positioned with our wastewater program, the recycled water program, the treatment processes they've got. I think a large credit to Steve and will be a lasting legacy is the people that he hired. He hired really, really outstanding people to run that program and they'll now have a chance to step up and have an opportunity to continue the work that Steve did. I want to thank him. I've been here only about 12 months, 13 months, and Steve has just done a great job welcoming me and helping me to understand all the great things that they've been doing. And as Bruce said, this Purple Pipe will be the envy of the valley and it'll be something that we'll always remember Steve for and something that he did, a great thing for the community.
Well, you know, for me, I didn't get a chance to work as closely with Steve as Bruce and Tommy did, but I will say that I probably am gonna say this because I think I can. Me, Steve and Lee may be one of the last council members that you'll have a meeting with, so I'm gonna own that right now. I think I may have been one of the last meetings with Steve while he was here. He got a chance to educate me yet still on a project that we're trying to do, really in a visionary fashion as well. I think Bruce and Tommy said it best where it's clear that your service here has positioned us to be in a great position years in the future. So we thank you that-- as a grateful council member, I thank you for that. I'm very, very concerned about this move to Monterey. I can't possibly imagine why anyone would leave all of a sudden in Fresno to go to Monterey. So, you know, we may want to have him checked out. We may need to talk to a psychologist because who would ever want to do something like that to leave Fresno for Monterey? So congratulations on the next venture in your life. I am certain that you will bring your visionary and expertise to Monterey like you did to us, but you'll certainly be missed here, but we all are very happy for you in the next segment of your life. Madam Clerk, can we read the proclamation?
Whereas Stephen A. Hogg started working with the city of Fresno in November 1982 at the Wastewater Management Division. And whereas, over the past 33 years, Stephen A. Hogg dedicated his professional career to ensure public health and safety in the area of wastewater collection, treatment and reclamation. And whereas, under his vision and leadership, Wastewater Management Division received numerous state and national awards, including Large Plan of the Year, Pre-Treatment Program of the Year, Public Information and Education Award, Outstanding Capital Project Award, Recycled Water Outreach Program of the Year, making the city of Fresno's Wastewater Management Division an example for other agencies to follow. And whereas, Stephen A. Hogg has fostered the can-do attitude that makes Wastewater Management Division a customer-service-oriented organization while showcasing the professional versatility of the division and its workers. And whereas, Stephen A. Hogg championed the much-needed recycle water program for the city of Fresno and also leaves a legacy of an efficient and reliable wastewater infrastructure that will provide and encourage economic growth of the community now and in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the members of the Fresno City Council, do hereby declare August 27th, 2015 to be Stephen A. Hogg Day in the city of Fresno.
Just want to say that-- by the way, I got new tires on the motorcycle yesterday. So, you know, this is really bittersweet because this is an organization that I've been very proud and honored to work for for almost 33 years. Actually, similar to kind of Bruce, I've grown up in this organization. Started as a mechanic at the treatment plant and so we kind of share that background a little bit. But I just want to say that I've been through a lot of changes and initiatives and programs. A couple of them were mentioned there. But I couldn't have done that without the trust and the support of this elected body and I just really appreciate all of you placing your trust in me to run one of the major enterprises in this community and support our citizens and our taxpayers. And I think, as you mentioned, I think it's kind of a sad moment leaving. Got hopefully some good stuff going forward, but I am proud to say that I think we leave the organization in great hands. As you mentioned, I could not have done all the accomplishments I did without the great staff we have. And just to mention a couple of the management team is Rick Staggs, Chief of Operations, Rosa Staggs, Chief of Environmental Services, Kevin Norgard over here, our supervising professional engineer. I don't see Tim-- Tom sitting here, but Tim in charge of the maintenance program. And Carla Watkins, who's really done a good job managing the financial program. While it's tough to leave, I'm proud that I leave the organization in great hands. Thank you all for all of your support over the years and I really appreciate it. Oliver, can I chime in real quick, Oliver? It's me. Steve, Steve Brandal here. I just wanted to say, I've only worked with Steve three out of his 33 years, but you've come to my office on multiple occasions, sometimes on short notice, and walked me through different projects and I appreciate that. One time, I even ran into you and your wife at Pismo's Restaurant and you walked me through a project. And so I just appreciate, you know, your support for all of us to understand the different projects. So I really appreciate it and want to know, do you have a spare room over there in Monterey? Anyway--
We can always make room for the weekend, yeah.
Well, good luck over there, Steve. We appreciate it.
All righty. So now moving on right on our agenda, we will now do approval of the minutes.
Council President, the minutes will be held over to the next meeting for approval.
All right, so we'll move right along to council member reports and comments. We will start with Councilmember Quinterol.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Fresno icon that passed away last Thursday, a wonderful woman, extraordinary and special, by the name of Rose Ellen Kershaw. And her main things for the city of Fresno were social and individual progress for women and our community. And George Hassetter wrote a great story, but she was a volunteer extraordinaire that did a lot in our community to make Fresno progress as a community and really become aware of social and political issues. And her main thing, as I stated, is social and individual progress. She was a member of numerous organizations, Friends of the Fresno County Library, American Association of University Women, League of Women Voters. And her main organizations that she liked to focus on were citizenship, politics, education, opera, public radio, fair housing. You go through any of those organizations and she was in the forefront of a lot of those organizations succeeding. And I think that one of the-- some of the best definitions of Rose Ellen, one was from Francine Farber, who said, "She didn't sit and watch things happen, she made things happen." And the other quote was by George in his article that said, "The lifeblood of a free people were her passion." And like I said, she was just a wonderful, extraordinary woman that always cared about Fresno and its social consciousness. And just wanted to ask that we adjourn in her memory for a life well-lived and served for Fresno. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Quinterol. We don't have any of the council members punched up, so I'll make a couple of comments. So yesterday, Councilmember Soria and I spent the day in Sacramento along with Marley Murphy and our contract counsel, really trying to ensure that Senate Bill 113 did not move through the legislature as proposed. We went to several meetings with legislators and staffers and I'm happy to report that the bill did not make it out of the Budget Committee, Senate Budget Committee today. It was-- the hearing was canceled. Councilmember Soria and I would like to take all the credit for that, of course, because it saved the city of Fresno about $69 million. It was quite a significant effort, but we know that it was the efforts of many people up and down the state of California, along with the League of Cities really coordinating along with us. So we were happy to be a part of the effort, but certainly wanted to report that back. That is the reason that we moved this meeting to 1:30. We run the impression that we may have to testify at this hearing early this morning, well, this morning at 9:30 and wanted to give ourselves ample time to get back. But in light of a lot of efforts yesterday, the hearing was canceled. So I wanted to thank my colleague for urging me to go up there and make those rounds yesterday. And finally, I wanted to join and Councilmember Quinterol, ask that we adjourn in the memory of Rose Ellen Kershaw today. So we will be doing that. But I also want to add a couple of names to that list as well. Allison Parker and Adam Ward out of Virginia. Most of you probably have heard of an awful tragedy that happened yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, where they were gunned down live on TV by obviously deranged gunmen who probably had some very severe mental health issues. So we stand with the state of Virginia and their families and honoring their life and are very saddened by those tragic events. So I'd like to also adjourn in their memory as well. And finally, we just wanted to let people know that Councilmember Capriolio is not here today, but if I know anything about him, I am sure that he is watching us right now and probably fussing at me for talking too long. But wanted to say that he is not feeling well today. He has a foot injury. He's heavily medicated and we are hoping that he can get well soon. So absent the-- he has to keep his foot elevated at a very steep angle, so we could not have him sitting here on a dais with his foot probably in the air. So we encouraged him to stay home today. So Paul, if you're listening, we all are hoping that you get well. All right. So next, we're gonna go to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are several changes to the agenda. The first item is Item 2A, which is file number 15715, and it is being removed from the agenda by staff and will be rescheduled at a later date. And the next item is the 3:30 workshop on LAFCO. That's gonna be postponed to a later date as well. And then the closed session item, which is 15629, is also being removed from the agenda by the President Baines' office. Item 3A, which is a council item, is being moved to a time certain of 3 o'clock. And those are all the changes.
All right. Alright. Do I Have A Motion To Approve The Amended Agenda? Alright, We Have A Motion? Do We Have A Second? Alright. All Those In Favor? All Opposed? Item Passes Six Zero With Councilmember Capriolio Absent. We Will Now Move On To Our Consent Calendar. Do We Have Any Members Of The Public That Would Like To Comment On The Consent Calendar? Alright. Coming Back To The Dais, Do You Have Any Council Members That Would Like To Remove Any Items From The Consent Calendar? Councilmember Quintero.
Thank You, Mr. President. I'd Like To Pull Item One K, Please.
Alright.
K Or A?
It's One K.
K, Thank You.
As In King. So Now, I Will Ask For A Motion To Approve The Balance Of The Consent Calendar. Has Been Moved By Councilmember Soria, Second By Councilmember Brandau. Those In Favor? All Opposed? Item Passes Five To Zero With Councilmembers Brandau And Capriolio Absent. So Councilmember Quintero, The Floor Is Yours With Item One K.
Mr. Malaleno? This Grant Application Is For Council District Number Five. And It's, I Believe It Ties Into The Fancher Creek Project.
That's Correct.
Can You Tell Us A Little Bit About It As Far As What The City's Involvement Is In Terms Of Maintenance And That Type Of Thing? Because I Think It's Worthwhile To Be Noted. I Think It's Going To Be A Model For Future Projects In Our Community. Or A Good Model.
Councilman Took The Words Right Out Of My Mouth. I Really, Well, First Off, I Hope That We Can Get This Grant. It Is A Competitive Grant. It's My Understanding That The Last Time That The City Applied For This Money, There Were A Lot Of Other Communities That Were Applying For It. And Although We Submitted A Strong Grant, It Wasn't Strong Enough To Actually Receive The Funds. We Feel That Our Grant Proposal Is Very Well Written. We're Asking For Five Hundred Thousand Dollars. We're Partnering With A Developer To Develop What I Think Is Going To Be, If We Receive This Money, To Really Develop A Model Bicycle Hiking Trail That Also Protects Repairian Habitat, Really Establishes A Nature Preserve And Can Really Be Used As A Model For Other Developments In Not Only Expanding The Trail System, But Also Putting In A Parkway That Is Extremely Sensitive To The Environment And Not Only Helps To Reduce Water Consumption By Helping To Put Water Back Into The Ground, But Also Is Going To Be A Very Attractive Amenity For The Community.
Can You Touch On The Fact Of The Cost Of Maintenance In The Assessment District?
Yes, That's Probably One Of The More Positive Things. If The Space Is Put In, It's Not Going To Be Costing The General Fund Any Maintenance Dollars To Maintain. This Would Be Part Of A Community Assessment District. The Unique Thing About This, There Would Be A Group Established To Oversee How The Monies Are Spent And To Also Ensure That The Sensitive Habitat Is Also Preserved By This Oversight Body.
And Due To The Fact That It's An Assessment District, I'm Sure That The City Manager's Office Is In Full Support Of This And Really Likes The Project, Right?
With Music To His Ears.
Okay. Thank You Very Much. I Think It's Going To Really, If We're Able To Get The Grant, It'll Really Set The Tone For Future Projects In Our City. And I Think It's Really Great That You Partnered Up With A Developer For The Area Help Enhance The Overall Project. So With That, Mr. President, I'd Like To Make A Motion To Approve.
Alright, And I'll Second That Motion. Thank You, Mr. Malaleno. All Those In Favor? All Opposed? Item Passes Four To Zero With Councilmembers Brandau And Capriolio Absent. Council, We Are Running A Little Bit Ahead Of Schedule Today. So Our Next Item Is Not Till Three O'Clock. But What I'm Going To Do Is Take Unscheduled Communication Right Now. Do We Have Any Members Of The Public That Would Like To Comment On Any Item? Not On The Agenda? Alright, Seeing None, I'll Bring It Back To The Dais. Council, We Will Recede Until Three O'Clock When We Will Begin To Take Up The Balance Of The Agenda. One, Two, Three. Alright, We're Going To Call Our Meeting To Order. Okay, So First Up, We're Going To Move To Our, We Have A Three P.M. Item. It's A Hearing Pertaining To A Resolution In The Council Of The City Of California, California Establishing Underground Utility District, Number FRE-94, Staff.
Good Afternoon, Council. Jim Pauls, Square Public Works Department. Proposed UUD FRE-94 Is Generally Located Along Abbey Street Between Belmont And Hedges Avenue, As Shown On Exhibit A. Staff Is Requesting The Adoption Of FRE-94 So That Overhead Utilities Can Be Undergrounded Along This Roadway. Underground Installation Of PG&E Overhead Electrical Facilities Is Funded By Utility Company Funds Set Aside Percent To CPUC Rule Twenty A. PG&E's Cost To Underground Existing Overhead Facilities Within FRE-94 Is Estimating To Be Two Million Ninety Thousand Dollars. Other Utility Companies Such As AT&amp;T And Comcast Will Provide Hundred Percent Of The Funding For Undergrounding Of Their Existing Overhead Facilities. The City Will Be Undergrounding Streetlights Under A Separate Project, Which Will Be Funded By Surface Transportation Program. There Will Be No Impact To The City's General Fund. Staff Recommends Council Adopt The Resolution Establishing Underground Utility District FRE-94. Thank You.
Alright. Thank You, Staff. We'll Now Take This Item Out To The Public. Do We Have Any Members Of The Public That Would Like To Comment On This Item? Alright, Seeing None. I'll Bring It Back To The Dais. It's A Pleasure For The Council. We'll Make A Motion To Accept Staff's Recommendation. We Have A Second? All Those In Favor? All Opposed? Item Passes Six Zero With Councilmember Capriolio Absent. We Will Now Take Our Second Three P.M. Item Of The Day, Which Is A Bill For Introduction To Adopt An Emergency Ordinance Amending Section Sixty-Five, Six-Dash-Five Twenty Of The Fresno Municipal Code To Provide Water Conservation And Exemption For Food Gardens. Councilmember Soria.
Thank You, Council President And Colleagues. So I'm Here Today Because I'm Introducing An Exemption To An Amending Of The Water Conservation Act That We Passed Earlier As It Relates To Food Gardens In Our Community. So We Know That In April Of Two Thousand And Fourteen, Our Governor Issued An Executive Order Calling On Californians To Conserve Water And Reduce Statewide Usage By Twenty-Five Percent In Response To The Historic Drought That Our Community Is Experiencing. Fresno, Our City, And Very Proud Of What We've Done, We Have A Track Record Of Being Waterwise And Really Responding To The Executive Order. We've Doubled Down And Adopted Increased Water Conservation Regulations To Further Reduce Overall Consumption. And I Know That Council Colleague Lee Brown And Paul Capriolo Really Took The Leadership On This To Ensure That We Were Meeting Not Only Our Goal Here, But The State's Goal. The City Of Fresno Has Seen Immediate Results With A Thirty-To Thirty-Three Percent Range In Reduction Of Water Use This Summer Compared To The Same Months In Two Thousand And Fourteen. We've Exceeded Our Twenty-Eight Percent Water Consumption Goal. And I Want To Again Just Thank My Colleagues For These Efforts And Also To Our Department Of Public Utilities For Their Leadership On This. The Exemption That I'm Proposing Today Allows For Daily Watering Of Food Gardens That Are On Drip Irrigation. I Do Want To Just Make Some Clarifications. I Have Worked With The Administration And Our Legal Council To Add Some Clarifying Language Of The Exemption. So One, The Exemption Will Apply To A Quarter Or Smaller Acre Lots. And Two, Any Lot Larger Than A Quarter Acre Will Need To Apply To The City Manager For This Exemption. Three, The Exception Will Allow Watering Any Day Of The Week As Long As It's Below The Average Monthly Residential Usage. And We've Also Talked About Coming In Ninety Days To See And Ensure That The Program Or That The Exemption Is Working. We Know That Community And Home Gardens Have Become An Important And Necessary Fixure Throughout The Entire City Of Fresno. And They Really Serve As A Strategy For Residents To Combat Food Insecurity And Food Deserts, Which Is, We Know, A Pervasive Issue In The City Of Fresno. And So I Believe That This Exemption Will Encourage Our Residents To Continue And Be Able To Grow Food In Their Own Backyard. So I Would Like To Thank All Of You For Your Time. If You Guys Have Any Questions, I'm Happy To Answer Any.
Alright, Thank Councilmember Soria. We Now Have Several People Here Have Submitted Cards To Speak On The Item. So What I'm Going To Do Is I'm Going To Go Through The Cards First. But Don't Think That If You Did Not Submit A Card That You Don't Have An Opportunity To Speak. After I've Gone Through All The Cards, You Will Have An Opportunity To Speak If You Did Not Submit One. First Up, We Have Michael Evans. If You Will State Your Name And Address For The Record, Please.
Okay. Good Afternoon. Michael Evans, Six One Four One Northwest Avenue In The City Of Fresno. The Fresno Partnership Of Which I Represent A Participating Organization Has Long Supported Community Gardens And The Need For Provisions To Provide Adequate Water For Those Gardens. Our Thanks To City Councilmember Esmeralda Soria For Taking The Lead On Moving This Initiative Forward. Given The High Poverty Level In Our City, Community Gardens Have The Capability To Bring People Together To Grow Their Own Food. And The Resulting Bounty Can Help Address Some Of Our Hunger Issues. Community Gardens Furthermore, Give Us Fresh, Locally Grown, Accessible Produce In Urban Areas, Which Particularly Useful In Areas Identified As Food Deserts. Moreover, There Are Environmental Benefits To The Gardens, Not The Least Of Which Is That Drip Irrigation Does Not Waste Water. Community Gardens Help Improve Their Community. And I Would Encourage You To Support This Measure To Help Residents Help Themselves. Thank You.
Pam Whalen. And State Your Name And Address For The Record, And You Have Three Minutes.
My Name Is Pam Whalen. I'm At Forty-Seven Seventy-Three North Arthur. I'm In A County Island, But I Use City Water. And I Just Want To Thank Esmeralda Soria For Bringing This Up To Your Attention And Support This. I, Myself, Grow Food Both Summer And Winter Crops In My Front Yard. And I Have Fruit Trees. And It's Very Important To Me So I Can Have Fresh Fruits And Vegetables That Don't Have Pesticides And Other Chemicals In Them. And I Just Don't Want To See My Trees Die And My Eggplant Die And My Tomato Plants Die. I Understand The Need For Conserving Water. And I Have No, I'm Not Here To Defend Lawns. I Don't Like Lawns. But Please Let Us Grow Some Of Our Own Food. Thank You.
Kyle Schmidt.
Afternoon, Council. First, I Want To Thank Esmeralda Soria For Bringing This Issue. It's Pretty Important To Us. My Brothers And I Have Started An Urban Farm Called Tower Urban Family Farm About Three Years Ago. And We've Been Farming The Urban Area, Like Backyard Gardens Within The Tower District As Well As Some Larger Plots On The Fringe Of Town To Produce Food For Our Neighborhood, Local Restaurants, As Well As Right To Our Neighborhood With A Fresh Produce Stand, Farmer's Market. So We Are Very Concerned About Water Use And We Are Very Mindful Of It Because We Want High Quality Plants. But We Also Are Worried About Conservation And Have Looked At Taking Out Lawns To Put In Urban Gardening. And It Actually Uses Less Water Than If We Were To Maintain A Lawn There. And We Use A Method Of Irrigation Called Drip Irrigation That Applies Water Directly To The Root Base Of The Plant And In A Metered Way With A Timer So That Applies Just Enough Water To Saturate The Roots Of The Plant Twice A Day. So That You're Just, You Know, With Little Drips, Putting The Water Right Where It's Needed In A Strategic Way. And That, It's Very Important To Do It Very Often In Little Amounts. Because If You Do It More, The Water, The Ground Gets Saturated. Water Goes Below Where The Roots Are And Goes Down And Percolates Or Evaporates Without It Getting Used By The Plants. So The Key Part Of This Proposal Is Allowing A Daily Usage Of The Drip Irrigation In Order For Us To Conserve And In Order Us To Keep The Plants In A Quality Production. If We Were To Have To Water Two Days A Week Like Normal Landscape Irrigation, We'd Have To Flood The Whole Ground. A Lot Of Water Would Be Wasted Through Evaporation And Percolating Into The Ground. And It's Not Even Guaranteed That Our Plants Would Be Healthy With Only Two Days Of Water A Week. So We Definitely Encourage You To Pass This. It'll Have An Impact On Our Farm That Has Five People Engaged In The Production Earning An Income Off Of This And An Important Element Of Access To Food In Our Neighborhood. So Thank You Very Much.
Nolan Schmidt.
Good Afternoon. I'm Just Trying To Address The Concept Of Drip In General. I Wanted To Approach From A Different Concept That I Actually Live Eighteen Thirty-Nine Whitesbridge, Right Across From Granville's Orchard, Almond Orchard. And I'm Just Simply Looking For That As A Business In Urban Situations That I'm Giving The Same Shake As Them. They're Allowed To Water As They Please. I Watch Quite Often They Sprinkle Their Water Midday All Manners Of Days. So Just What I'm Looking For Is A Fair Shake As A Small Businessman To Get The Same Chance As Every Other Farm. We Try Very, Very Hard To Conserve Our Water. On Top Of Our Drip, We're A No-Till Farm. So We Don't Plow. It Doesn't, Plowing Releases The Carbon. It doesn't, plowing releases the carbon. It also releases water from the ground. Carbon's what retains water in the ground. We also do a hugo culture concept where you bury, like wood or bury anything that has any carbon material. All that's all water retention. So, we've always, before there was ever a city ordinance, like from the beginning, we've always tried to conserve water. We've always gone out of our way to conserve water. We spend quite a bit of time addressing people in the neighborhood and people who have gardens as their most effective way to conserve water. But this concept that you can put one size fits all for half a million people in Fresno and that everybody has to somehow fit into that same water concept isn't realistic. And so, I'd like to find a way that is, a way we can move forward that allows us to urban farm, that allows people to have gardens, but also allows us to conserve water and continue to do everything we can to do that. So, I'll have, thank you.
Dylan Savery.
Dylan Savery, 606 West Rialto. I'm a proud member of Councilwoman Soria's district. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this issue. I really just want to look at this from a 10,000-foot level. We know our community has lots of disadvantaged neighborhoods. We know, just like the gentleman before me said, that no one size can fit all, but we do know that Fresno's made great progress on cutting our water reductions back, and I want to commend you guys for taking those actions. And just say that there are more actions to be had, and this will probably not be the last time we have to look at the water ordinance to find new ways to help families that grow their own food, whether or not they can afford to make it to the grocery store, or grow their own food because there are so many pesticides that get released into the ways in which we grow food. So, I would like to highlight the fact that maybe we need to look further down the road and say we should be trying to find ways to provide drip irrigation to communities that will not be able to convert to drip irrigation right away. And so, look at how we can provide that with help to get drip irrigation to everybody in the city at an affordable manner. Thank you.
Austin Hall.
My name is Austin Hall, 808 West Alamos Avenue. I am the coordinator for a group called the Fresno Partnership that has been working on pushing this, pushing a waiver for community gardening for some time now, a couple of months. I myself am a residential gardener, and I planted three crops this summer. I attempted to grow corn, cucumbers, as well as watermelon. And due to the watering restrictions because of the drought, I found that my cucumbers and corn did not survive the summer. It would have been very nice to have had a waiver that would have enabled me to be able to grow more crops. It would be nice for us to be able to, as a city, invest in community gardens and in residential gardens so that community members within the city of Fresno are able to take that time to get the health benefit of gardening, both of getting to eat healthier crops, as well as taking the time to work in a garden and to be able to develop that relationship with land, of being able to yield some sort of crop from it. I think that it is very important for this ordinance change to be enacted so that we can push for a positive change in our community like that. Thank you.
Zach Dara.
Zach Dara, 1940 North Fresno Street. I'm the Executive Director of Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministries, and we currently operate four community gardens in Fresno, in Fresno, two of which serve the Southeast Asian Refugee Community, one with the Slavic Refugee Community, and a brand-new garden on Fresno and Ashland that will serve the African refugees here in Fresno. We have a long history and tradition of community gardens, and currently about 75 gardeners participate in this program. Our community gardens provide food for quite a few families that would not have the opportunity to grow food since many of them live in apartment communities without space to grow food. This provides security for these gardens, and the future of these gardens is important to the refugee community. And, you know, I would definitely like to ask your support in moving this change to the ordinance. They are county-funded gardens, and the county continues to remind us that as long as we're able to water the gardens, we'll continue to fund the gardens. And so, this will also allow us to hopefully secure future dollars to continue to keep these community gardens going for the refugee community. So, thank you, Councilmember Soria, for bringing this to the table and bringing this issue. You know, obviously, a lot of people care about this issue in the community, and I know the refugee community does as well. Thank you, guys, so much.
Adrian Lim.
My name's Adrian Lim. Thank you so much for taking the opportunity to address this issue because I think it is so direly important. This community is, the whole city has been established based off of the agricultural heritage that we've just all grown up with. We live in the food basket of the world, and so, to be able to reinvigorate the community that, yes, you can only water your lawns two days a week, but instead, you can go ahead and have a thriving garden right in front of your house that provides you with food and make sure that that's going to be well-watered and you're able to take care of it. Actually have it established would bring so much more life back to the community. So often, we hear about how individuals in the upper echelons of our society complain about how they just don't want to have a brown lawn. Well, perhaps we can just have them grow food instead. I don't see why that would be so terrible. And to start weaning people off of the irresponsible nature in which we've been using water and aim it back towards something that they can actually, you know, provide with, provide themselves with. Thank you very much.
Nancy Waitlow.
Nancy Waitlow, 804 East Fedora Avenue. I garden at my home in Old Fig, and I garden at the Eco Garden in Esmeralda's district at Hughes and Dakota, at the Dakota Eco Garden. And we, at the Dakota Eco Garden, it is a source of food for a whole bunch of people who otherwise would be homeless, and it is a source of good, healthy exercise and productive work, and it is a way we can show them how they can eat more healthily. I think I'm wasting you guys' time because I think you're going to vote for this, right? Is there any way that we could know that this was already done? And, I mean, I love it. It's great to be here for something that I really think you're on my side. Doesn't happen too often. Anyway, that's the main thing. I think the people that are gardening are also the people who have their laundry water going to their plants already. They have the free chips from the tree services delivered to their front yard. I have a small mountain in both of those properties that we're all busy spreading out to make mulch to save every precious drop. So, I think that's probably all, and thank you very much.
Caesar Casamayor.
I live in 2890 Huntington Boulevard. Today, I come as representing Cultiva la Salud, a community-based organization working in Central Valley to increase healthy food access and bring about change through policy, systems, and environmental change. We support this ordinance being presented today by City Councilmember Soria, and we strongly, we feel strongly about this because it's a positive step in addressing improved access to healthy foods. Our central disease control funded reach efforts focuses on Southeast Fresno, establishing a community garden. As you might know, many Spanish-speaking communities in many instances have to travel far distance to gain access to fresh produce because we are in a food desert in Southeast. This limited access contributes to the widespread of obesity epidemic. An ordinance like this will go a long way in promoting community gardens and help alleviate a small part of the burden of food deserts and lack of healthy food access. Organization Cultiva la Salud is in support of the ordinance presented today by Councilmember Soria, and I think it's in the best interest of all Fresnoans to have this ordinance pass. Thank you.
Sarah Sharp.
Sarah Sharp, Resilient Communities Program Director from Fresno Metro Ministry. I have a letter just I wanted to put on the file, and I have, I believe I have enough copies for everybody. So, as I mentioned, I'm the Resilient Communities Program Director. I'm not going to belabor this. It seems like everybody's in support, and I'm hoping this is not controversial, but we want to thank Councilwoman Soria for taking the initiative to do this. And we, as you know, have been working on community gardening and hunger and nutrition issues in Fresno for the last at least 20 years, and we believe this, you know, people's ability to grow their own food is a very important part of community resilience. I would also say that using drip irrigation has been a major priority in the community gardens that we work with the city on, getting all of the gardeners over to using drip. And so, we know that that is a doable goal for all gardeners in Fresno. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Those are all the cards I have. If anyone else from the public would like to come forward that has not had an opportunity to make comments on this item, please come forward now. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the dice, and I will give the floor to Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to thank everyone who showed up today to show support for this important exemption. Again, just to clarify, we will be coming back in 90 days just to make sure that the exemption is working, and so, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Brand, and Councilmember Brand, you're up.
Thank you, Council President. When I wrote the, with Member Capriolio, the Water Conservation Act back in October, I believe it was Article 12 provided a provision for people to request exemptions from the standard, and it included gardens and drip irrigation. At the time, it was only a recommendation, so this amendment ties in directly to that. And it's clear that, you know, flooding, we're doing whatever you can for two days per week, we'll use, I think, a 180-degree head does about four hours, four gallons per hour, where drip irrigation's probably, you know, probably four gallons in a day or eight hours is substantially less. And I think this is a good effort in that direction to allow people to grow gardens and stay within the limits that were our goals of 16,000, correct, 16,000 gallons per household, which is the citywide average. And the city has done an exceptional job in water conservation, and this allows the community, people, to grow vegetables and fruits. And I can say that my family, many, many years ago, we did have our own garden, and we did rely on the garden to provide food for the family. So, I will support this measure. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand out.
I have a couple of questions for my colleague, and I actually asked a couple of them earlier, and I, so I kind of wanted to clarify. Am I correct in understanding what the real motive here is to allow people that want to grow food? As some of the folks have spoken today, it's almost better to water a little bit every day and just keep those plants under correct water. And so, are we, the goal to allow that to happen and lift the daily restrictions that the city's imposed on people? Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so, it's really not about allowing people to use more water than other people? It's just allowing a certain type of water use to happen more consistently?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
On a daily basis.
Okay. So, we're not up here voting to allow folks that want to grow food. We're not saying, oh, if you want to grow food, we're going to let you have an extra 500 gallons, nothing like that, right?
No.
All right, I appreciate it. I'll be supporting this with a yes vote.
All right. We, I don't have any other, okay, I don't have any councilmembers punched up, but I have City Manager Bruce Redd.
Thank you, and appreciate the opportunity. My understanding, this is a 90-day pilot program, and during which time, we will work with the council office as well as some of the community garden operators who are here today. I understand there's a difference between residential gardening and those that are being performed at a community garden, and while drip, when used properly, is far more efficient than using bubblers. But as Sarah knows, we actually partner with Metro Ministry, and we've had to deal with situations in which a drip system has been, had been allowed to run essentially 24 hours a day. So, we're going to use this 90-day period to work with Fresno Metro, as well as other of the community gardens, to find out or try to identify a way to address their needs because they're going to be a little bit different than a quarter acre site, and therefore, this 90-day will allow us to do that. I also am not aware of a community garden that we, has popped up on our amount, an ordered amount of water. So, therefore, this one might be one of the things that we just need to identify based on a per acre for a community garden. But we'll come back in 90 days with some data that clearly delineates and shows what, if any, impact. I also understand from Councilmember Soria that Visalia has a similar program, so we're going to look into what Visalia's doing as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
All right. I'll make just a really, really, really brief comment. Obviously, this is not a difficult item to support at all. So, thank you, Councilmember Soria, as well, and my colleagues that are supportive. And I know Councilmember Brandon and Councilmember Soria worked hard on this along with the city manager to really bring us what we have today. So, thank you all for all your hard work, and I want to also express my thanks to the community for coming up and reiterating the importance of an ordinance like this. So, again, not a difficult one to support. Thank you all for the hard work on it. We have a motion by Councilmember Soria. We have, and let me just say, I know my friend, Councilmember Paul Capriolio, is listening. I have a sneaky suspicion that he would be supportive of this as well. So, I know that he worked very hard with Councilmember Brand on the Water Conservation Act. So, I know this is in line with some of what they wanted to do too. So, we'll definitely be thinking about you, Paul. So, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-0. Councilmember Capriolio absent. Thank you. We'll now move on to our 315 hearing. Hearing to consider rezon application number R-15-008 in related environmental assessment numbers. Staff?
Yes, good afternoon, Councilmember Baines. Council President Baines, members of the council, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management staff. The matter before you is a rezon application, R-1508, that essentially deals with 20 acres of property located on the east side of Cherry Avenue, south of north. The proposal is simply to rezon the property to M3 to industrial use to allow for a future 370,000-square-foot industrial building for warehousing and distribution. Both the District 3 Committee and the Planning Commission, both unanimous, recommend approval of the project. No opposition has been expressed, and favorable council action today will also initiate annexation proceedings for the project. Both the applicant, Mr. Brelsford, as well as his representative, Mr. Dirk Pushel, are in the audience to answer any further questions you may have.
All right, we'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Very briefly, Council President Dirk Pushel. My business address is 923 Van S., and I'm here, as Mike said, on behalf of the developer, John Brelsford. We agree with the conditions, and we certainly appreciate staff's effort to expedite this project. It means jobs and industrial competition for our community. We thank you for your support.
Do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dice. Councilmember Brand out. Wish approved. Caught you flat-footed there, didn't you? I have to ask our city attorney a question before the next item, and you guys moved too quickly. Anyhow, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Item passes 6-0. Councilmember Capriolio absent. Thank you, staff. All right, we will now move on to our scheduled communication for 345. We have an appearance by Sandy Yellowfeather Noriega. You can come down, and you have three minutes.
When I was approached last year about the idea of me participating in a documentary on homelessness in our city, I was still homeless myself. From October of 2003 to December of 2014, I was on and off the streets of Fresno. The day I was interviewed for this film, I spent my first night in my apartment, made possible through 25 Cities Initiative. Before that, I lived in encampments on F Street, and my home there was the last structure standing when this encampment was demolished in August of 2013. Shortly after this occurred, I met a woman who was at the Pavarino with her church to give up food, clothes, and prayer. She asked me what specifically I wanted prayer for, and I told her that I was tired of being kicked when I'm just down. She responded with, "Why would they do anything less than what you're already doing to yourself?" This was the moment in my life where everything changed. This specific remark motivated me to deal with my addictions, and I now have two years clean and sober. I conducted the interviews you'll find on the documentary I'm here to share with you today, and I want today, and I want you to know that I asked each homeless individual to share on camera their point in their life where everything changed for them. Being able to help the library make this film possible has been a rewarding experience. Sharing my story has truly given me a new sense of hope. During the panel discussions that occurred after the public screenings of this film, I truly felt that the homeless of our community were finally being heard and not just seen as an eyesore. Through this project, I have had the opportunity to be a voice for the homeless community. This July, I received a scholarship to attend the National Conference on Ending Homelessness in Washington, DC. I learned about some of the ways Fresno is doing things right, and some of the ways we can improve. One thing I know for certain, because of my own personal story and the story of others I have learned from the decade that I have spent on the streets, is that we can erase homelessness without dealing with the complex problems of each individual. Everyone has a different story about how they became to be homeless on the streets, but we all have in common, regardless of where we lay our head each night, is that we all want to be treated like a human being. Instead of focusing on the problems of homeless create, create in your districts, please consider spending the time to focus on creating programs and services that can help. The film Our Lives: Surviving the Streets of Fresno includes the panel discussions and bonus features, and when you watch these discussions, you will see the housed and the unhoused talking directly to each other about ways to improve this problem differently. Please take the time to watch the film. This will be the first step towards creating new ways to resolve homelessness together as one community. Contact me if you have any further questions. I am ready to work with you towards a better Fresno. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. So I, I want to, I saw I had a couple of cards on, on, and, on this issue. I wanted to be clear that, that Sandy, you, you scheduled communication for this, and you, we gave you three minutes to, to talk on this topic, but it, it wasn't a package deal for everyone to talk all at the same time. So I wanted to apologize, but all of you won't have the opportunity to speak on the issue. Is that okay with you, Sandy? Okay, I think we, we received the video, and I think we received the message today. And if you wanted to speak under unscheduled communication, you can certainly come back at the next meeting or schedule of communication. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brand out.
Sandy, just stay here for a second, please. Well, A, thank you, and I, I promise I'll watch that. I'm very interested in your story. You mentioned the 25 Cities Initiative, is that correct? Did I get that right?
Yes.
So, and, so Sandy, just a matter of fact, just last, last Thursday, a week ago, we had a discussion, somewhat of a discussion about homelessness. And, and it's really an ongoing, I mean, some of these ladies remember, from the first week that I got here, one of our first discussions was homelessness, and I was asking a bunch of basic questions. And, and some of them I'm still asking, actually. But, and you mentioned, you know, don't focus on the problems that homelessness creates. But we have to do that too, because, I'll give you an example. Councilman Brandon and I just got called out to a business association about three weeks ago, and these businesses are being impacted by homelessness, and, and sometimes by the homeless. And then sometimes we find out when we ask questions that it's not really homeless, it's people, people think that they're homeless, but they're really not, but, and they cause problems that the homeless get blamed for. So, and I am going to watch the video, but you've been off of the streets for how long now?
Well, I, when I got clean and sober, while I was at the Pavarello, and I went into the Naomi House, and then after that, I went back into the Village. And then from the Village, I tried a few programs, and it just wasn't for me, but I was sober. And then I made contact with Beverly again. She seen me brushing my teeth out by the Village, and she told me about Dakota Eco Garden. And, you know, I put in application and took a, took a drug test, and I passed and got accepted there. And I lived there for like six months. And I got housed in my apartment at December 19th. So I've been-
Just this last December 19th?
Just this last December.
Okay, okay. And then, so of, from your experience, what, what are the, the three things that you think helped you the most?
First and foremost, you know, my, my personal relationship with Christ, that helped, definitely. And getting sober, realizing that I was creating a lot of problems for myself with my addiction. And, and started to focus on what good was happening in my life instead of everything that was bad in my life. And then two, surrounded myself by people that were willing to embrace me, broken as I was. And, you know, they focused on what I was doing for myself. And, you know, I mean, I couldn't have done it without Naomi House, with, without Dakota Eco Garden, without, you know, Lisa from the library. I, I just, you know, they have, they have made me become, helped me become the woman that I am today.
Well, I appreciate you answering my questions, and, and, and I, I'm glad that you're number one, I really liked your number one answer too, by the way. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give my card to Todd to give to you. I'm putting my cell phone number on the back of it, and I'd love to go out and have lunch or something-
Thank you.
-and learn a little bit more.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we are, that was our last item of the day. We are adjourning today's memory, adjourning today's meeting in the memory of Rose Allen Kershaw, Allison Parker, and Adam Ward. So thank you all for attending that. We are adjourned.